These people are paying attention.
One.
Well.
And they're wearing a Pepsi.
So there's two.
And Sarah, as soon as she got home, would have been pissed. So three.
There you go.
Do you want to go start over? Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, I just have a few things that I wanna um talk about. Uh first, I'd just really like to give the street guys, they've been working hard and they've been getting some chip sealed done. They've learned a lot this first year that they're ready to go to your address. I think that's done chip seal. Um so it is a process and they've done a great job. A lot of hours in and as well with all the other works, water shooters and fixing leaks, digging, cleaning. And they um also Friday when that big deluge of rain happened, street crew was out there cleaning, getting, we had a couple of blowouts. They helped the state multiple times with different areas. So because they've reduced down to one person, they were that day. Um so yeah, they've been working hard, doing a lot of hard work, as everybody in the city does. But they get their better time at least then.
How's the reservoir looking now?
Uh we're holding, holding. Um we did have a little bit of after. So what happens when it rains a lot like that, then we get a bunch of turbidity, which then shuts down Orca and Mertzton. And so then we have some water pressure drop because the tanks dropped because we couldn't build. So we have a little different kind of water crisis when there's too much rain. Very precipitating, the water situation. Um I also wanna just uh bring this up. So it was brought to our attention um for the breakwater fill lot. Um that there was not a leasing option in the RFP. It was only purchase. So it said purchase or lease with option purchase. And us Susan and I went back, we listened to the discussion during that timeframe when the motion was made. Motion was very clear, lease or option to virgin, sorry, I can't say that. Lease or purchase. Um and there was also discussion amongst council members about the leasing portion of it. So I feel like uh we probably need to put a lease leasing, a lease, an RFP to lease out for that. We do uh I don't feel like a RFP for purchase needs to go back out. That's been out, it's been done. But we put a lease with option. Cannot say that together, anyone says lease, a leasing option now. Um so we have some logistics to work through, figure it all out. And uh it's unfortunate, but I think in fairness to the discussion that occurred when everyone was here, including many public um people, we will do that unless council has any objections to that.
And the purchase was just for the building? There was no?
This is the breakwater fill.
Oh, this is breakwire, sorry.
Yes.
I did.
Yeah, no, that one's good.
Okay, breakwire.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, but with that.
We received one that was for purchase, but we don't want to put purchase out again because that would be unfair to them.
Right.
So we're going to consider options, but unless council has any objection, Sam will work it out, figure out the details, put it back out. So we're kind of wanting to pause on it so that the next steps aren't all taken. And then the whole thing is to come back. So we're pausing, we're gonna do the workout, the details of that.
So does anybody have any questions or concerns for me?
No, but I was gonna compliment you on the report, Sam, because that's why I don't have any questions. Because everything's there. So thank you very, very much.
Great performance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be all I need. I just wanna make sure that for the send out RFP for lease, you don't need any direction or anything formal from council. As long as we don't object, you're just gonna move forward with it, correct?
Correct.
Mending or off easy, but.
I don't even hear any here. I remember when you were gone, Kevin was like, I am asking you all staff, just never understand that thing.
Um okay, so then we come to the city clerk's report.
Um the big item on my agenda coming up is a um board of adjustment. Um I think I've sent you guys some emails about it, which are um just giving you a little bit of the detail and to stay away from any expertise and stuff on that. But we um I have given a letter to the um appellant today and we worked out some dates between Sam and I. And I knew the mayor was going away for a little while, but of course we picked a date that the mayor will be gone for something else. But I did just confirm with the city attorney that the vice mayor would be okay to run the um board of adjustment as the chair. So Mr. Kinsman, are you available on October twenty second? That you know of, or is that too far away to know?
Um I I I think it's just far enough away. I can build my schedule around that.
Right.
Yeah, when when do you need the, can I let you know tomorrow? I guess that good enough?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And what we've determined also is that it can be delegated, so it can be another council member if it doesn't wind up being the vice mayor. That's just the order we would go to next.
What question is there?
Somebody else asked me something? No, no. Okay, um so. I took some other notes of what I was going to talk about, but I've, oh, other things I'm working on and waiting to get some answers about the group that's working on doing some pet euthanasia here. Trying to answer several about DC and the landfill. That was their next question that they had to tackle about disposal of pets that are euthanized. Um and then we've been doing a lot of records requests and Sam called out all the great staff, which of course includes the finance department. And now uh the deputy clerk is also learning how to take in property debts. And that was a crazy few days or last week or so, but it's nice and they're doing a great job taking in all that money, which is an important part of what we do. Uh on top of sales hats and utilities and everything they do every day also. Um then dealing with cemetery a little bit, nothing too hard, but a few questions have come up about the different cemeteries. I'm really only using the cemetery on the highway at this point. There've been questions about the um Ladyue Cemetery, which is beautiful and whatever, but there's just the records are not good enough so that it's just too dangerous and risky to do any burials over there. Um and then between planning commission and city council, we uh Amanda and I were talking to Emily a little bit today and we're gonna be uh a lot more consistent with the way we advertise both of those equally. Uh getting them on the Facebook page, doing the government delivery emails for them, just so that uh anybody who wants to hear about either of those. And I don't mean to say that the other boards and commissions are less important, but they still have very strict guidelines of where they do their things. But planning commission and council are the ones taking actions on items for the community. So we're gonna be consistent in those two, at least with a little bit of advertising. That is all I am going to report on tonight. Answer questions.
Any questions with a clerk online? Okay, thank you. Great. So then under correspondence, we have, there's several pieces of correspondence. Um. A package of information from the headquarters of the landlords, which I think is, I I just wanted to recognize what they have put in. And it sounds complicated. Um and there's obviously history and they've done a great job, I think, of of um putting together a paper trail within uh the history of the easements of that area, so that's really helpful. And um I I don't know sadly that the city has much of a role in this other than to say like if this sale does go forward, then we need to be advocating for those property owners or somehow accounting for that in the subdivision planning.
Well, yes, there's always public meetings for class, preliminary class, then goes to final class. There's a lot of opportunities and I would imagine that the university has some rules that they have to do some kind of public um outreach as well. Um so if it moves forward, you know, we're certainly gonna be doing that, so.
Yeah, like I said, I appreciate that the landlords put together the paper trail for us. That's helping. Let's see, statewide long range transportation plan that are from Paul Payne about the um harbor entrance lot. Another aim for it for the breakwater fill lot. And um more information about RCA C's September events. Okay, so correspondence, any questions on that? Any comments? Any online? Okay.
Um Chris.
Yes.
Uh I, yeah, I I guess I was happy to see all the documentation for the um this subdivision and the potential conflict with people in the area. But yeah, it it really wasn't clear to me what what the city could do. And and I don't know, is that, is that something that we would feel comfortable asking staff to look into? Or or I just wasn't sure how to proceed with what they presented. So I I if there's any clarification on that, I'd love to hear it, or taking no action is correct?
Well, at this point, it hasn't happened. I mean, they haven't approved this out. So at this, I don't feel like there's anything we can do right now. And I'm, you know, I, when it, it, when and if it passes, we will be working closely with them and we will have this documentation. I mean, it's, they have to live within the city's planning, subdividing rules. And if there's easements and other um incumbents on the property, they'll, they'll have to be honored. So yes, we will be working with them, but at this point, nothing's even solidified.
Great, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted.
Yeah, and so I just, for people listening in at home, I'm gonna um give a shout out for RCA C. They're having uh like I said, a Tuesday night talk five thirty at the science center. Um Wednesday from four to six at the manacles elementary, the master disaster. Um education and training. And then uh our community is also invited to join a reception, a public reception, reception at the reluctant drinking and then uh um bar and restaurant on the eighteenth from five thirty to seven thirty. Um and then their board meeting on Thursday and Friday. Okay, so that's our correspondence.
If if I might, Mayor Smith.
Yes.
I I actually, I feel it's probably appropriate for me to throw some support for you. I know there was some uh less than favorable comments made for you and a correspondence in there from uh Ms. Payne. And I just want to say that thank you for what you're doing and for reaching out to all aspects of the community. Just because it's going to RFP does not mean any action's gonna be taken on it. We wanna see what's gonna out there, what's gonna best serve our community as a whole. That's not saying that we don't appreciate the public comment. That's not saying that we're disregarding it. And it by no means I can see is anything that you're doing to misrepresent this community. So I just wanted to say thank you for the way you have represented our community.
Thank you. I think that's why it's important to uh because I I felt like when we talked about the the in at our July second meeting, that the motion was made to lease or purchase. And so I wanted, yeah, I think it's good in the RFP that we can um extend it for a lease possibility. I use that word, that other word that confused the things. Um which I think might address some of what was talked about in correspondence. We'll see. But thank you. Okay, so ordinance of the resolutions, uh the next item on the agenda is ordinance one, two, three, four. Moment. Do you take a motion?
Yes.
Yes, I was known, Sherman.
I make a motion to bring ordinance one, two, three, four and ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code three point one, two point one, one, zero contracts to expressly require collective bargaining agreements be approved by city council via resolution.
I'll second it. It's been motioned by Sherman and seconded by Randy. So council member Sherman to speak.
Yeah, um this has been on uh our pending agenda for a long time. And um and as someone who has formerly in the past worked with the collective bargaining uh group um and the city managers, this is, I think this is important to bring it um before city council um and into the public. And I'm saying that it's a, a good addition to our code.
Council member Randy.
I agree. I think it's important that um it be public and with council approving other financial issues, I don't see any reason why council shouldn't be involved in the final look at um at the agreements and uh have it be more of a public process.
Okay, um other council members online, does anybody wanna offer a comment?
Uh yeah, I just, it was pretty uh, I guess debilitating to the whole budget process, the whatever it was two years ago when this was being finalized and really stuck in a limbo, not knowing what was going on. Having an eye, I mean, not saying who was, you know, negotiating this wasn't doing a great job. They're doing a great job, but um yeah, it seems like we're gonna be stuck with this again at a another kind of budget period. So it seems like it'll be beneficial to be involved and review.
Brother.
Mayor Smith.
Yes, that's my abs.
Um I'm I'm assuming that this has to do a collective bargaining agreement with um personnel. And is there any, I guess, is it FERPA violations that that we would be stepping on if um this is all made public? Or am I misunderstanding?
Um I think that there'll be some meetings that won't be public when we talk about, you know, negotiating points and things like that. And this final, I mean, my vision of what this means is that the city manager is in there talking with city council as we move through this process, whether it's public or an executive session on some things. And so at the end, there's no big surprise. They could be, we should all be on the same page. So that's kind of how I envision it. And since lawyers wrote it, I would assume not, but we could certainly ask them that question.
Um the 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 final CBA is public knowledge, absolutely, uh always has been. Um and yes, the way Sam described it, I think most managers have done it that way, whereas they're negotiating it, they have an executive session or two with the council to say, working on these points, they're asking for this, I'm working, going back with this. And council gives parameters, which helps. Um currently, the way it all reads, the council should be approving the CBA. Anyway, this is expressly putting up front in case there's turnover in council, mayor, manager, clerk, and it gets forgotten at some point. So that we're just making it a little more clear, a little more called out in code per council's wishes, as it's been on pending agenda forever, like Kathy said.
Um great, thank you.
Any other comments online?
I forgot to put first reading on the agenda page, but it is first reading. It will come next time for public hearing on second, if it gets approved tonight.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion with all those of neighbor leasing, I'm gonna say aye. Aye, aye.
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 Any opposed, same side? Motion passes, thank you. Okay. So then we come to uh resolution zero nine dash two five dash two four. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, that was council member Sherman.
Um.
I moved to approve resolution zero nine twenty five twenty four, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing amendment to the fiscal year twenty five budget in the amount of four hundred and eighty eight thousand six hundred and sixty seven dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, considering, considering. Okay. Moved by Sherman and seconded by Kinsman, council member Sherman.
So um I'll I'll ask the manager personally and maybe more clarification. But one of the things, like the forestry seeds and school debt on, and that, that was so sad. Um and they came in at thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty one dollars, which is not what we have budget. Um there's some good news on there too. Um and this is always hard because this is the quarter when we bring in the house revenue. So um but in the um essence of housekeeping, I I'm comfortable to do this. I know we're also gonna be working on budget in the coming month um weeks, so um just interested in what else there is to hear, or from other councils.
Um council member Kinsman.
Yeah, thank you. I see this, I see, I'm trying to see the opportunity of this. If it's awful that happened, things that were out of our control. I'd like to see during the budget cycle, um maybe are a budget that reflects less dependence on some of these um uh forest receipts and state debt reimbursements where possible. Um and then as we receive more, then we have a windfall and that's great. We can put stuff back and pay off some other things. Um I I think it's time for us to take a look at how we can control our destiny a little bit more. Um that's, that's kind of the opportunity I'm choosing to look at, the lens in which I'm trying to look at this through. So um I, staff, great job on presenting the key points. I mean, I I really don't know that I have uh a lot of questions about this. Outline the risks. Um and and then some oppor- opportunities to make this right. Really appreciated the, the kind of mid-year look at the budget as well, highlighting where we're at, again, some of our, our, our risks that were highlighted. Um I guess I would just say, is there anything else that we should know between uh Sam or Cheryl on, on this topic?
Is that how Cheryl come up? Um I did, I got so involved in the RFP thing, I forgot to mention and just wanted to make sure that everybody understood in the mayor's, keep calling it your report, the manager's report about ordinance um twelve thirty one. Was it, I just wanna make sure, we just really want to make sure everybody understands that this is not, this is, has already occurred. And Cheryl could give the history in a much more eloquent way than I can.
About elements, but um we're not talking about moving any more from the permanent fund. The three million that was originally borrowed for the harbor in thirteen twenty one, or twelve thirty one, sorry, um was then transferred to cover cash flow needs in the general fund. So this is just a a quick check in on things that we do already know. Um forest tree seeds, uh school bond debt reimbursement, and then also the increase to the property tax so that we can capture that and show council and the community. Um basically, the two thousand twenty five has absorbed a portion of that if this is passed. Um so when we're talking about that three million dollars that we will revisit this year after budget, um it reduces that amount that we'll be talking about as being borrowed. Um yeah, okay.
I will say that um I sent an email to Murkowski's aide, who answered me in fifteen minutes. That was so important, um about forest receipts. It has, Murkowski led the charge and it has passed the sentence, sentence, and it has to go to the house. It is there, they can choose to vote on it starting yesterday. Um so there is the potential that it will be um pushed through through twenty six.
So this is twenty twenty six money?
Yeah, I didn't get a clear answer on if it was through twenty five. Um and then I got sidetracked. So it is, it is still a potential um unknown one. School debt renewal, you can move it. For twenty six.
For sure, not for twenty five, right? In the states, FY twenty six, we do know that that was reduced twenty five percent, which is impacting us in our, well, twenty five.
Okay. So I don't know.
I think, I think we all knew this was coming. I think it was presented eloquently in the packet. I appreciate the numbers and the check in and um I'm certainly not surprised.
Any comments from online, council member Adams or Dickelson?
Uh no comment, except that um I appreciate the, the detail that that all of this was presented. I know it doesn't, it, I know it takes a lot of work, so thank you.
I would echo those comments. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
I think I just want to emphasize, and maybe I'll do it again at council comments, anyone who's listening and who's going to listen. I mean, this is, this is revenue that we had built a budget around. It's not insignificant amount of money. It's actually quite significant. And this revenue has to be made up somewhere. Um and then it's, again, going back to my previous comment, it'd be great to hear some input from the community. But I think it would be very prudent of us to really look at our budget and um kind of uh see what we can do to control our own destiny when it comes to this, this kind of money, which then unfortunately is, is asking uh input from the community because the community, we're the ones who are going to have to make up that difference. So but clearly, the, being so dependent on a state and federal government has been failing and waning us for years, so and it's, you know, having to determine what that budget looks like on a two to four year cycle uh doesn't seem very sustainable and is proving not sustainable. So hopefully that is noted and anyone who is listening can uh come, help come to the table with some solutions and ideas because this is all of our community. It's not just the community of the few of us sitting at the council table. This is gonna take a whole community to come up with the solutions. And there's more than one. So, thank you.
Right. Hearing, no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And you vote the same sign? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on down to pending agenda, CBA list, calendar, elected, uh listed official lists. Takes us to page ninety nine, elected. It's just good we're talking about pending agenda, and it's on the pending agenda list, and it sort of fits in with what we just talked about. I will, oh, I think it was run up earlier this year, somebody said, maybe it's time to talk about. Looking at the code, the regulations around the dispensary. And I raised that partly because uh I think we all know that there is marijuana in town, there's people are buying and selling it. If we're not taking advantage of that, we might be leaving money on the table. And I also was asked about it um the other day when I went to the Taco Bus, because he said he gets asked all the time about where there's a dispensary in town. And I think when Councilmember Kinsman said there's not any one silver bullet that's gonna uh help us with our budget questions, but maybe there's a series of things to look at, and this might be one of them.
A clip of bullets?
Pardon?
A clip of bullets?
But it is on our pending agenda to consider changes to conditional use permits for marijuana establishments. Is there anything else for pending agenda? I guess, I guess I would want, oh, I'll just say run an ad that we talked about in open house with Rural Cap at some point. Not sure when, but we talked about it in open house with Rural Cap, and to invite more members of the public to learn about the self-help program. And I think that was Councilmember Adams?
Yes, uh, just a question, I I I'm not completely familiar with our dispense, our dispensary, what do you call it, regulation or? I I'm, can we get some information about that? Because I I don't know what the city, how the city's process works with this right now.
We can send it when it says conditional use permit uh above and beyond the state's requirements. The state requirements are very lengthy and excessive.
But are there two council members who want us to bring the ordinance forward for a change? To put it to the state rules, because currently we are a little stricter than state rules? Or do we wanna have a work session sometime, just to review it?
I have all the work sessions booked for budget, just.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm, it's pending agenda, it can be, it can be three months from now.
It seems appropriate to have a work session about it. I mean, I know we've, there's been some discussion in the past, and and certain people have been approved in the past, but no action was taken on their part. But yeah, it seems like we could revisit it this winter.
And you know, um, so we were talking about having um a city attorney come in for the border adjustment, because it's very lawyer intensive. So we were thinking, let's find something else you can talk about while you're here. And that could be it, because how we put on major presentations when marijuana was first happening, I I think it might be less intensive now. Just to, just to speak to the differences that we get, the changes we have to make, we could try and work that out.
I'd be interested in whatever we need to do, so put me as one council member.
Okay. But you kind of leaned towards a work session to discuss it before actually bringing just that ordinance for action. Okay, I think that'd be appropriate. Is there a second? Well, I kind of liked it, but okay, um, yeah, I I have read this a long time, so I guess I would need to just refresh. I think it's about the distances from schools and churches that is just, we put it at a little bit higher. It was all, it was very brand new.
Yep.
And everybody assumed we'd be getting one like everybody else, and then we just didn't.
Yeah, it's about ten years ago.
I think it would be useful, maybe before scheduling a work session, to just send us the conditional use permit. We can all go online and find out what the state goes and just give us a week or so to re bring ourselves up to speed. I think that's part of what we should do as counselors. You know, learn about the issue, and I I would need to refresh my little brain. So, okay, I don't need a work session just yet. So I'll just put marijuana on the pending agenda as explore changes to code.
Sure.
Um, I mean, it's already on. Oh, it's already there, yeah, put in eleven, that's why I raised my seat. Because Kevin, remember when Kevin was the manager, we chatted about it then.
Oh, so.
Kevin says, the manager first.
Oh, so it's Kevin's stuff.
It is Kevin's stuff, even though he's the whole of Works Director now, not even the planner.
Yeah, I think we can um go backwards to when we put those codes into place, and it's pretty apparent what our difference is. So, and then uh look into the conditional use permission and kind of send the code and then some highlights on it.
Great, that would be helpful, thanks.
MJ cut code. That's mine.
Anything else for pending agenda?
No, but does the manager have a budget scheduled for?
So, uh, we have a, we have a very crazy uh next couple of months coming up. So the next meeting, we're gonna do twenty six. Revenue, Cheryl, so keep me in line, because somebody feels wrong.
Revenue will be discussed at the first October, hang on?
Oh, that's right, we pushed to the first October, we were getting budget worksheets in the hands of supervisors and department heads.
Hopefully by the end of the week, this week, and then we'll have those internal meetings um to build that part, but revenue first glance, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
And then um it, we didn't have anything concrete on the next, yeah, the goal for the next meeting, but I'm kind of envisioning that we'll have at least first draft of um of expenses for general fund only to you on the next meeting, to then the second October to fifteenth.
And what timing are we thinking for those um one hour before the meeting?
A work session? Yeah, I mean, I would say yes. I mean, we can do that little trick where we need more, we can recess it in.
Okay, I like that, sure. Like tonight, it would be a perfect example of, we might be done by eight. If we had needed to recess the work session, we could have done another half an hour or an hour, if them.
Yeah, so um I am actually taking Sunday after the Wednesday this
seventeen, seventeen, September.
And I will be back on the twenty sixth, and then Cheryl has two trainings uh in October. And so.
Weeks in between council meetings, so it's gonna be a little dicey getting that information into packets, but um that's the goal.
Yep, we can be okay.
And sometimes the work session packets may not be out with the Friday regular meeting packet, but that will give you the weekend to do the regular meeting, and then if it's out on Monday or over the weekend. Of course, I'm gone for a couple of weeks too, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
That's all we're starting, huh?
That's fair. It looks early until you start moving up.
Yeah, it is, it is famous last year.
There's holidays and so, so right now, that's our tentative, or that's our schedule. And then how it rolls after that, we'll see, but staff will be working on their revenue, the ones who have revenue to see where they're at and what they're thinking, and then we'll get the other revenues in. And then um we will have twenty six personnel costs in the budget that staff will be working on. Ready to go.
We've got the board of adjustment meeting on the twenty second.
Yes, I will throw that on now that we have that date.
I can attend, it's just.
Okay, I'll be home.
Other additions for pending agenda? You think that seems like enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to audience participation. Audience consists of staff, would you are welcome to grow comment, I turn for. That is, yeah. Okay, council comments? Now we start with people online, just to be, just to be around you guys. So, uh, Councilmember Adams? Does she have any, I guess, start with you, do you have any council comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, I just, I was excited by the work session and um what possibilities could be available to Cordova, so I really appreciate the presentation. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kinsman? They're muted, so. Where did we go, Zoom? Maybe we'll try Councilmember Nicholson.
Maybe I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay. No, I was just gonna say that's, that's probably the theme of the evening, I think. That was a, that was a good use of time, great information on the work session, and kind of excited to see what potentials are there. Hopefully, we can drum up some excitement in the community and and find a solution. Also was really encouraged to hear that there might be like a a block home or town home option as well. I just, I I think we can't. Uh, we can't, but I mean, we have to explore everything, there's. We're, we're in high, housing crisis, and that might be the ticket to make it affordable, wherever the right spot is. Which is exciting. With that, again, thanks for the positive news from Samantha, that's fantastic to see we we have a path forward as my, I guess, near and dear to my home, my son is getting really tired of doing swimming practice outside of the pool. He understands, but he is very much looking forward to being back in a pool sometime. So thank you for that update, and then again, just the snapshot of the budget. It was really good to kind of mull over, see where we're at, and so I appreciate that. That, I'll say thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Nicholson, your turn.
Well, I I really appreciated the budget snapshot. I feel like in all the different organizations and boards I've been part of, that was the clearest and the most concise, and it was really easy to look at, and thank you for presenting it that way. I certainly have heard from multiple community members about the pool, so I I too am very happy to uh hear that there's some, some positive news to report. And um, yeah, I'm done with saying, so I I should be, should be around a little bit more at these meetings. So I'm looking forward to getting caught up, and um I think we're gonna have a busy winter in front of us, so thank you, everyone.
Congratulations on your season one down, it's been decent. Councilmember Sherman?
Sure, thank you, um, Rural Cap was enlightening, I had no idea, so that was really useful, and I'm looking forward to bringing that to the community, seeing what we can do. Um, kudos to all of us down, especially um Samantha Marzarek and the chip sealer, certain hours, and um also the water cruise, because there was a lot of rain um the other day, and I remember what that does. And thank you for the budget update too. I will be um calling in for the October meetings, but I will push it down.
Um, I appreciate that Echols, we've been landowners getting that material into the packet, so it's public, that's helpful. The P and Z members that attended for the Rural Cap presentation, that was, it was nice to have a group effort here to get information passed out. Cheryl, I don't know about you, but we've not had a finance director for so long, do we need one? You're doing pretty good.
Yeah.
So I think you just, I think you just did yourself out of a bead for that position. Right that time in the budget, but I appreciate all that hard work there. I'm looking forward for some more literature for Rural Cap, it's not something I do a whole lot about, so looking either to do some more research on my own or see if we can get some more literature. As to restrictions, I would hope that the possibility maybe with the university land combination, maybe seeing them partner uh with that subdivision. I don't really know what that all looks like, but that would be a neat, a neat project. And Samantha, good news from the pool, uh, you know, I want the community to understand that while we love participation, you know, the pool is a priority for us. We are not holding Parks and Recreation back from opening the pool. You know, it's, it is not us saying you can't have the money to fix it, you can't go forward with it. We are not holding anything other than the mechanics of what has to happen to the pool um and the timing on that. You know, we have a brand new liner, we need to make sure that that's taken care of, and the warranty's held on that. Uh, we all think of the pool as a priority. Um, I have a history with that pool and my family and my kids, so, so we know, we know. And and while we love, we love meetings, please don't send any more ice worms with big eyes to tell us to prioritize the pool. It's a prior, it's a priority, we we honest to God, it's a priority. And thanks to staff for everything else, so that's, that's just great.
Council comments, we don't have any executive session, I think. There's one more motion?
No future.
I'm putting it was the second. What we really need to run?
Oh, I think you're right. Are you on Twitter?
Thank you.
Thanks all night, everybody.
Good night.
All right.
Thank you, thank you guys, good night.
Thanks.
Carter, Deborah. I can add that, with no, with her hearing them.
It's, you do it a lot, which I appreciate. No, I mean, I like it on approving the agenda and everything.